Call to order, the City of, Lincoln City City Council meeting, April 9th, 2012. Roll call, please.
Mayor Dick Anderson.
Here.
Gordon Eggleton.
Here.
Gary Yellingson.
He's just excused temporarily, he'll be joining us.
Chester Norikis.
Here.
Roger Sprague.
Here.
Henry Quant.
Here.
And Alex Ward.
Here.
Please stand for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Republic stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty.
This would be the time for comments from citizens present. The purpose of comments from citizens is to allow citizens to present information or raise an issue regarding items not on the agenda, or regarding agenda items that do not include a public hearing. A time limit of five minutes per citizen shall apply. I've asked the city recorder to utilize the light system so that the speaker will be informed as to their remaining time, and so that we have consistency. As a general rule, this is not a time for exchange of questions, however. At the conclusion of this agenda item, the councilors can discuss or raise questions regarding something presented by a citizen. And we have a sign up. And this would be the time, with Cheryl Johnson, to present, come forward. There is, I see your note, the dog park topic, and that is on the agenda, but not necessarily for public, you know, comment, so now would be, now is definitely the right time. Yeah. And we'd just ask you to talk right into the mic, and name and address, would be great.
My name is Cheryl Johnson. I live at 1324 Southwest 69th Street, Lincoln City, Oregon. And obviously, I'm here for a dog park. I think it's a great idea. Some of the benefits of a dog park, it gives the dog owners a safe place for their dogs to exercise, run free, in a supervised, in an enclosed area. Obviously, there would be no cars, bikes, skateboarders, and things like that. It encourages responsible pet ownership. It provides an opportunity for dog owners to learn from observation, and from more experienced dog owners. The dog park is both physically and mentally stimulating to the dogs. It reduces destructive and annoying behavior, such as barking or jumping up on people. And behavior problems are one of the leading causes for dogs to be turned into animal shelters, so it helps in that area also. It provides seniors and disabled community members with an accessible place to exercise their pets. It provides for socialization for both the dogs and their owners, and strengthens their bond with the community. And many dog owners will walk around the inside perimeter of dog parks to exercise themselves, while their dogs are also exercising, leading to, you know, fitness and mental, you know, And it's more likely in a dog park that you're going to encounter other people that enjoy dogs, versus being in a park where somebody's got their dog loose, running around, and jumping at you, and things like that. And having a tired dog is often a happy dog, because then they're not looking for other ways to entertain themselves, that aren't as positive. It doesn't require a lot, you know, other than land. What I've read is a minimum of one acre for each area, for a large animal, and a small dog area, requires a fenced area, four to six feet, preferably a double gated entrance. It should have a suitable water source, and ideally, a shaded area. Having adequate drainage would help preserve the soil quality and maintain cleanliness. For comfort and enjoyment of the people there, a picnic bench or table would be nice to have, as well as having a receptacle and plastic bags for picking up the obvious, and having adequate parking. Having a dog park would be beneficial for the city economically. Many hotels, resorts, and that are pet friendly, and many businesses, and more and more people are traveling with their pets. If I was coming to Lincoln City, and, you know, or the coast, and looking at Lincoln City, or Newport, Newport has two dog parks, and Lincoln City has none. I think people would spend, you know, they're spending motel rooms, restaurant, you know, shops, and that, and that would bring, help some of the economy here. A dog park could also help Lincoln City become part of a, be a destination town, and on a daily basis, local businesses are being asked where a dog park is located in Lincoln City. Research has also shown more and more potential homeowners are considering the availability of a dog park when they're considering moving to a community. Other groups, such as skateboarders, softball, baseball teams, have been given special consideration in view of their unique needs, and I believe that this consideration should also be given for a dog park here on Lincoln City. I have been circulating petitions around Lincoln City, asking people if they're just interested in having a dog park. I have collected 696 signatures, and I've only heard positive comments from everybody that I've talked to, and any of the businesses that have had their petitions in their business, that they've said, it's just been well received, and one person said, "This is the easiest petition that I've ever dealt with," because people were wanting to sign it. I've gone to the Park, Lincoln City Parks and Recreation Board, and they've been supportive, and were asked that the city council to consider helping establish a dog park here in Lincoln City, and I've also contacted the mayor, and have some come up, and I know that he's, supports the idea of a dog park. I'm planning on creating a Facebook page in the future, and there are some people here that have come to help, to show that they're support for the, for a dog park, and if they would stand to let people know.
Nice to see you.
And I just hope that you'll help support and help to have us a dog park here in Lincoln City. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Now, I know it's not by coincidence that there's a agenda item called Dog Parks here later on. I'm assuming you're going to stay for that discussion?
Sure. I'll go.
Great. All right. We may have to call on your expertise. Anyone else wish to make comments at this time? Okay. Then, we have, the next item is the consent agenda. The consent agenda, these items are considered routine, and may be enacted in one motion without separate discussion. Any councilor may request that an item be removed for separate discussion and action. The consent agenda consists of, one, request to read ordinances first by title only, two, Bymart agreement, three, Oregon legal control license, new outlet license for Delhi 101 LLC. Number four is resolution number 2012-07, amendment number two, memorandum of agreement, Confederated Tribes and Sletz Indians. Number five is 2012 Fund Exchange Agreement, Lincoln City Overlay Storm and Sidewalk Project. And number six, rental agreement, commercial space, first floor.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to pull number five.
Number five. Any others to pull separately?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, number two and number four.
Two and four. All right. Any others? With that, then, I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agendas consisting of one, three, and six.
So move.
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda consisting of items one, three, and six. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed with a nay? Hearing none? All right. Chester, would you mind number two, the Bymart agreement?
Mr. Hawker, under section five, Bymart obligations regarding Pacific Plower Blue Sky Program.
Uh-huh.
Is there no limitation on that? Is there no, we eliminated the three-year expectation?
Right, right.
And we've replaced it with nothing?
Right, they go as long as we go.
Okay, all right.
Okay?
Good.
Now, if that, if in their judgment, that that becomes something that they have a better alternative for, or they think that no longer works, they can always come to us and ask for an amendment.
All right.
I'm not suggesting they do.
Understood.
Right now, we think it's a good program, but there's other options always available.
Thank you. I would move, Mr. Mayor, that we accept consent agenda number, item number two, Bymart Agreement Lead Standard.
Second. We have a motion to approve the Bymart agreement, and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed with a nay? Hearing none? Sir, would you stay with the resolution number, that discussion?
Yes, number four, on the consent agenda memorandum of agreement. I noticed in our packet, Mr. Hawker, that the amendment to the memorandum of agreement has Rick Brissette's name at the bottom of it?
What are we looking at? I'm sorry.
I can address that.
All right.
That was actually changed, you have the first version of it, so it's been corrected. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Good, thank you. I would move that we accept item number four on the consent agenda. I move that we accept that.
Sir, a second? Second. We have a motion to approve resolution number 2012-07, amendment two, memorandum of agreement, Confederated Tribes and Sletz Indians. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed with a nay? Hearing none? Thank you. And Mr. Sprague, item number five?
The only reason that I asked to pull that is that if you were looking at it the first time, and didn't understand what it was about, it would be very ambiguous. But I just think that for the public's benefit, that it's a good idea to explain what that, what that program is, because it doesn't specifically talk about a specific project.
Excellent point. Um, it's, boy, I wish Lila were not sick, and were able to hear talk about this, but I agree with you, it, it, it's pretty obtuse when you look at it. It's, it's a condition of us receiving federal funds that are washed through the state, okay? It's, I believe it's an annual event. It goes into our capital projects. It's just a requirement to get the funds.
It's just funds available for us to use on street and road projects.
Yeah, it's an annual budget, revenue budget, that we, that we have. It varies year to year.
I just thought an explanation of that was worthwhile.
That's about the best that I can do. I don't know the intricacies of how this works, these federal and state dollars. I haven't dug into that, and why, why they need something like this, I have no idea.
Well, I know the feds give the state money, and the, then the state takes a little bit out of it for themselves, and then we get the other 84% or whatever it is.
Ninety-four percent.
Ninety-four.
And that's, that's exactly what this shows, is the state, for the funds passing through the state to get to us, they take a cut.
They take their chunk.
That's, yeah. That was even true with the federal stimulus funds, that all got passed through the state. They made all the decisions. I believe a lot of them were political decisions, and they took five or six percent off the top.
And we still have a deficit. Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass the number five.
All right. Do we have a second? I'll second it. So we have a motion with a second to approve the 2012 Fund Exchange Agreement between Lincoln City Overlay Storm and Sidewalk Project. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed with a nay? Hearing none? Thank you. Next item of business is actually special presentations, and we're fortunate tonight to have a presentation on the Children's Advocacy Center. And Pam, if you'd like to come forward, appreciate it. Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much for allowing me to come this evening.
Would you mind giving us your name?
Sure.
And title, and where you're from, and all that good stuff?
I'm Pam Salisbury. I'm director of the Children's Advocacy Center, that serves all of Lincoln County. The center is actually located in Newport, to be close to the courthouse, because grand jury previously met for children at the center, and we're about to bring it back. So we're located in Newport, but we serve all of the county. This is Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month, and so it's a time in April for us to go out in the community and raise awareness about the problem of child abuse. It's also the time to celebrate the role that the communities play in protecting our Child abuse includes physical abuse, sexual abuse, neglect, witness to violence, and drug endangerment. Typically, there are more than 5,000 Oregon children confirmed as victims of child abuse each year. Lincoln County has the second highest rate of child abuse in this state. We're at 298 percentile, which means bad, worse. The Children's Advocacy Center has provided assessment and intervention to over 2,500 suspected victims in Lincoln County since opening in 1997, so we're almost 15 years old. One in four girls, and one in five boys, before the age of 18, will be abused. The sad thing is, only one in 10 of those will ever tell anyone. And that one has to tell or talk about it nine times, before somebody will listen. So those children that we're seeing in this county is just a very small proportion of the victims that are out there. The center referrals continue to increase. In the last year, our volumes increased 53%. In the first three months of this year, we have more than doubled the number of referrals than we saw last year. Now, that could be a good sign. It could be that people are more aware, and people are reporting, and the kids are able to come in and start to begin to receive the services that they need. Last year, we served 200 children for assessment and intervention, which also includes counseling and family support. A third of our referrals come from Lincoln City. And that's typical across the years. A hundred percent of our victims know their offender. Nationwide, the statistic is about 97%, but we don't have a problem of stranger danger. The center works with community partners as part of the Lincoln County Child Abuse Multidisciplinary Team, and that team meets twice a month to review each of the child abuse cases in the county. And Lincoln City detectives sit on that group, and Chief Bichard is a member of the policy team for our multidisciplinary team. The other members of the team include Department of Health Services and Indian Child Welfare, the school district sits on that team, county mental health, Lincoln County Juvenile Department and the District Attorney's Office, as well as the Children's Advocacy representatives. And as I said, we meet twice a month. We are just launching this month, the month of Child Abuse Prevention, a new program, trainings, Darkness to Light Stewards for Children, and we will be holding the first Lincoln City training on Thursday, May 17th, from 3:00 to 6:00, at the Driftwood Library. This is an interactive training program for adults on protecting children. In Lincoln County, we must build a sense of community interconnectedness, where what affects one affects all, where bystanders play an active role in preventing abuse, and adults must take responsibility to intervene. We cannot leave it to our children to protect themselves. Organizations dealing with children need a child abuse prevention plan that includes screening and supervision of children, number one, a policy regarding adult-child contact, and why that's important. Eighty percent of sexual abuse cases occur in one adult and one child situations. Number three, we need to make sure that our staffs and volunteers are trained to recognize the signs of abuse, and then have a clear plan for reporting suspected abuse. So each organization that deals with children should have those policies and plans. We ask that you watch and listen and believe our children. Everyone's participation is critical. As a community, we must raise awareness and strengthen families in our efforts to prevent child abuse and neglect. Every child deserves love, respect, guidance, safety, and praise. Let's all believe that getting it right early is less costly than trying to fix it later. A recent study came out that without intervention, the societal long-term consequences of abuse are profound. It is costing our country $124 billion of lifetime costs for just one year's worth of victims. It has been proven that early childhood trauma from abuse is resulting in teen pregnancies, alcohol and drug abuse, the high number of people smoking, obesity, heart disease, depression, and suicidal attempts. So the impact on society is great, if we're not identifying these victims and providing them with intervention. We encourage all individuals and organizations to play a role in making Lincoln County, including Lincoln City, a better place for families. By ensuring that parents have the knowledge, skills, and resources they need to care for their children, we can help prevent child abuse and neglect by strengthening families in our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The goal certainly was to help promote wider awareness, and hopefully, certainly, you've got council's attention, but the positive thing is, the audience, where this council meeting is televised, and we've reached a much wider public audience tonight, so.
We appreciate that.
I thank you. The numbers are staggering, and I, again, really appreciate you sharing them with us, and, you know, would like to be kept in the loop as due progress.
Great.
Are there any, any questions, council?
I have a question.
Break.
Of all of those that were reported, how many convictions actually came out of that?
Um, I can't, there's quite a few plea bargains. The number of children in Lincoln County that, they're going to trial, or they're being pled, the number of children going to grand jury has increased over the last couple of years. I don't have a statistic of actually the percentage. I believe that there are those that do go to trial, there's a high rate of conviction.
Good. Other questions?
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming forward.
Our next presentation is Guy Faust on the Community Development Block Grant, micro enterprise report slash request.
My name is Guy Faust. I'm the Small Business Development Center Director at Oregon Coast Community College, and also, micro enterprise director. I'm here for two reasons. One is to report what the 2011 Community Development Block Grant, what we've done, and I'm here to request your continued support of $5,000 for 2012. I feel a little empty-handed, generally, at this time. I have a report, and it lists all the different people that have been involved in the program, the number of hours we've served, and how many people we've helped, from what parts of the county they've come from, and what kind of businesses they've started or are in. This year, I can't do that, and the reason I can't do that is because the entire Community Development Block Grant timeline has changed. It flipped like six months, and so when I say I'm giving a report for 2011, it's because we were notified in December 2011 that our application had been funded. We did not start the grant, it was executed on January 31st. So actually, we've been in business since February, so we've been at it about two months. The reason for the change is basically, I guess you'd call it bureaucratic. Before you can apply for funding, you have to be 70% spent down before the next year, and because of the changes in how they interpreted their guidelines, we were not able, in fact, we were not the only ones around the state, but a number of programs were not able to fund it when we normally would, and have it in June, and get started in August. So we're about six months behind, is where we were last year. But here's what I can say, is that our contract goal is to serve 25 clients over the course of 12 months. We've already enrolled 30. We have at least 20 adults, and we have 10 students at the Neighbors for Kids Program in Depot Bay, that are involved in a youth entrepreneurship program. Out of the, the adults, more than a third are from the North County, and of the kids that are involved in the Kid Zone, or in the Neighbors for Kids Program, eight of the 10 are either from a high school or career attack. So the North is being represented very well at this moment. I would imagine, before the grant is over, we'll probably serve somewhere between 35 and 40 clients, and again, our contract goal is only 25. This is our eighth year of getting a grant from the state through Community Development Block Grant. We're the only county in the state that has received a grant for eight years in a row, and our current grant is $51,000. Over the last eight years, we brought in over half a million dollars from state funding to help micro entrepreneurs. And the reason why, at least the reason I believe we have been successful, is because of the coalition that we have amongst the county and the three cities. City of Lincoln City, City of Newport, City of Walport, and the county have all put in hard money into this program, and because of that, it basically puts us in an advantageous position around the state. So it's, our goal again this year is to apply again, and hopefully, find out in December that we will be accepted, and get the program started, basically, in 2013. But I need to be before you now, to be able to ask for your request. So that's the report, that's the request. Are there any questions?
Guy, would you mind just briefly, what some of the things, you know, what happens to the clients that you enroll? How is the money leveraged?
What's happened in the past, again, the rules have changed. In the past, we could use the funding for two purposes. One is training. One is training. Basically, we had scholarship down for different classes. And it could also be used for business advising. Well, those rules changed a couple of years ago. Now, no longer can you use the money for business advising. And trust me, the folks that are taking our classes, they need the advising more than the training. Some of them didn't do too well the first time around in school and here they're asked to learn, you know, business concepts. And so what we did in the past is we used the local funding for leveraging. Now we use the local funding for the one-to-one business advising, or call it tutoring, after that class has taken place. And so that is where, that's where the need is and that's where our request for help is.
That's great. Other questions? David?
Yeah, Guy, I'm just a tiny bit confused on your funding cycle and how it was laid and what we've paid for what period and what you're asking for, what period. It all gets, it's gotten jumbled up in my head here from listening.
Traditionally, traditionally, I would be here at this time, the funding would be approved and we would start, basically, they would execute the contract in July. And so it'd go for fiscal year. This year, because it's required to have a seventy percent spend down before you can apply, that spend down was not achieved until, at the end of September. So we could not apply for these until early October. So they notified us in December that we had received the funding.
So the program has not been continuous?
It has been continuous, well, yeah, you could say there's been sort of a six-month gap.
Okay. And how's our funding fit into that six-month gap, I guess is where I'm headed?
Well, before, it was just right in sync.
Right.
And the program would start in July and the funding would start in July.
Right.
Now, the program basically starts in January. But I need to request now for it to kick in for next year. We're just a half, we're just six months off is basically what it is.
I'll try my best to figure that out.
So this is your request for funding for next year?
Yes, for.
2000, our fiscal year.
Well, for 2012-13, because this kicks in in 13.
And have we made a payment for the current fiscal year?
I believe so.
I believe so too. And that's, I guess that's what I'm asking, if we're full funding every year and there's been a gap, I don't understand why our funding is the same with or without the gap.
I don't know how to answer that, other than if I came here next year at this time, the program would have already started. It would have started in January. And there would be no funding.
I think I understand that. If we continuously, and we have for years, funded $5,000 a year for a 12-month program and there's been a period of time that there's not a 12-month, there's a six-month program?
Well, no, it's still 12 months. We're going to be running the program from January through December this next year. It's a 12-month program.
So you'll be going, oh, excuse me.
But it sounds like we've got six months' credit, is what I'm hearing.
I think so, I'm not sure.
Mr. Hawker's saying, since you weren't running for six months and we paid for 12.
No, I'm confused. We've been, everything has been on the same schedule up until this year. This year, the program, I guess, yeah, I'm trying to figure out, when the program was actually concluded by the state of Oregon, it was in the fourth quarter. So this year is run longer, I guess.
We haven't paid you yet this year, I just got a note, this fiscal year. Because we haven't gotten an invoice.
I don't know, that's through our business department, so.
Okay. Again, I'm just trying to figure out how this all works and we don't need to do that tonight.
Other than, you know, I guess a consensus, you know, from council, because if not those, we want to get it as an item into the budget.
Right.
For the one coming up in June, the next fiscal year, 2012, 2013. Yeah. Correct?
Yes.
You'd like to, you'd like to.
That's my request.
See us nod and say yes, you know, put it in the budget and it adds value. And again, remembering it has, it's great leverage for $5,000 for the small business touch. Other questions?
I just want to say, I was not being picky or argumentative. I strongly supported this program. It's growing businesses are one of the best things we can do.
Yep. Other questions from council? Could I have a, you know, just a consensus of council to, that you're in agreement, not necessarily voting, because we'll, it'll be.
Absolutely.
But to make sure it gets its way to the budget?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Guy, for coming. Good luck with working with CB, Community Block Grant. All right, we have, next item is leak detection equipment.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just getting back on my.
Leak number nine?
Oh, I'm down with paragraph, excuse me.
Again, Lila was going to present this, but is ill, so I'm going to pinch hit. And Dave Scheibar, Water Distribution Supervisor is here for any questions that I can't handle. We, every piece of equipment that detects leaks, different capabilities. It was key to us to try to get demonstrations of their capabilities and how that equipment would work with our existing equipment. And that's been a real struggle. Some of the companies that offer the equipment will not demo it. I guess there's not enough profit or they're selling something else that makes more profit. Anyway, one system was evaluated. It's the low bid of the two from Fluid Conservation Systems. I believe that was actually an initial bid from, I believe, was it Ferguson? Here in case I need some help on this. You've been dying to do this anyway.
You didn't bring it with you.
I saw you there.
Sit down.
Why don't you go through what your experience was in trying to get demos and?
Yeah, just speak right into it.
Excuse me. I had a lot of trouble getting people to demo it. The one that did, I did get to demo it, that vendor that I was going to purchase it through no longer exists. Then there was another type of one I was going to, I was trying to demo and he said exactly what Mr. Hawker said. There wasn't enough money in it for them and they were in Washington. They ended up, the company that owns the equipment, that has the equipment and makes the equipment, not the vendor itself that I was trying to get it through, took it away from them. And at the last minute, I found out they had it, I could get it. Demoing it, on the other hand, was a little more difficult. From what I found with the FCS, the Fluid Conservation one, Barnum, I spoke to a lot of different cities. Portland, Corales, Albany, Salem, I got references from them. I spoke to Albany in particular, in length, and it is a, they found what I had already known about it since we demoed it, found a pretty substantial leak up on Schooner Creek that we could not find for many years. It was underneath that slide, I think we all know about that. See what else? Oh, there was another vendor on a totally different piece of equipment. I believe it was Metro Tech. I was interested in it, it was a little cheaper. I personally didn't care for the quality. And I asked more information, they sent me a four-page flyer. And I asked him for any more information he had and he had no idea because he had never sold one. So it was, you're kind of, every corner you turn, you're hitting a brick wall, but.
The long and short of it is, we are asking for the low bid. It's the best piece of equipment. We would have liked to have an opportunity to see more equipment, test more equipment, but we didn't. We're perfectly satisfied with a piece of equipment that's there and it, in fact, has been tested on our mains and found, found at least one big leak, right?
Yeah, yeah.
That we couldn't find because of the stream noise. It was one of the Schooner Creek leaks. Believe? You can do this or no?
It was Schooner Creek, yes.
Okay. Sorry, David. And we couldn't find it because of the noise of Schooner Creek, this equipment does a lot more than the current equipment we have. The only issue is going to be how much time we can put into using it. That's going to be a function of how many leaks we find, how many breaks there are. In recent months, they've been pretty overwhelmed by leaks that they know of and problems that they knew of. But hopefully, we'll get a break in that and be able to find some of the leaks. The water loss isn't getting any better. We found huge leaks on Schooner Creek main, fixed those, found a number of other leaks. The numbers aren't getting any better. So it's, we're going to try to put as much resource as we can, once we get this equipment, into finding some of the bigger ones.
I was just going to say, when I spoke to the city of Albany, what he had told me was, after they had it barely two years, they had found 60 leaks just with that equipment. That's not to mention the contractors breaking lines or just visible leaks. That's just with that equipment. He said most of those he found, he would not have found otherwise.
Let me just remind council that the reason this is even on the docket is during budget time and prior to, a lot of discussion about water leaks and, you know, looking for a way, when we were looking for the future to conserve water and we talked about increases in water rates and to help with the conservation incentive, we felt as a group to, we needed to give the water department more technology to find existing leaks. So we actually supplemented the budget in order to, you know, provide this kind of availability of higher tech. So that's why it's coming before us. Do you have any concern about, not necessarily the equipment, but the support of that equipment? You know, if the companies behind the equipment are kind of hard to find?
Well, previously, the company that I was going through, United Pipe, they no longer exist. But I spoke with a previous employee that now is with Ferguson. He says they will be picking up the Fluid Conservation line, huh? Yeah.
Okay. You have reason to believe that you'll get adequate support?
Well, I have the direct line from the vendor himself, behind that.
Okay.
I spoke with him in length.
So I assume we'll be keeping the equipment for numerous years and would not make sure.
Well, we can add to it if we need to. And if there's other pieces and parts to it that will go along with like AMR and AMI systems, which goes along with our census meters. So if we ever went to radio read or anything like that, there's, it's compatible, there are components that are compatible.
Terrific. You all right?
So you feel fine about them being available for consulting and maintenance? They'll be there for us?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
I also have a question, Mr. Hawker, on Lila's memo. We need not award the bid, not award to the low bidder. Is that because it's under $50,000 or $100,000? Is there some?
Yeah, that's right. When we purchase equipment, we can consider a variety of factors. We brought you the excavator here a couple of months ago. It was the low bid, but I explained at that time also that we didn't need to. We could consider parts availability, performance, which we did, service, warranty, all kinds of different things. And it's only required that we get the bids, and I don't remember the dollar limit, but it's well under, it's well over this amount.
I'm also looking at the memo and FCS, the memo indicates we've got a bid of $36,900. And yet I look at the quote from FCS and it says 44.6.
Did you get a better deal?
Well, there's, there's two different quotes. One is FCS through United.
I eliminated United and I'm looking at the FCS quote.
Mr. Mayor? The reason that those figures are different, based on what I can see, is that there are two classes that are added over and above the $36,000. That was going to be my question, is are we going to be undertaking those classes? There's a four-day class and a two-day class?
Yes, we are.
Then the actual bid then should be $44,000 rather than 36, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
That's probably what you were, forty, an even $44,000?
44.6.
44.6.
According to the quote from FCS, now, memo says 36.9. Are you, are you following this, Mr. Hawker?
I sure am.
Yes.
Also in the memorandum says here that Fluid Conservation Systems agreed to supply the product and training at the same price as United Pipe and supply submitted to us, $36,900.
That's right.
In the memo.
So maybe there was a.
Maybe there was a.
There may be something that was added that I, that shouldn't be on there also. There was a class and there might be something else on one of those. I've looked at so many of these.
Yeah. We just want to make sure we're approving the right amount.
Right amount of money, so.
Would think that what we could do is approve the purchase of this equipment and that's kind of the range of.
Yeah, and I'll get back with you. I'm looking at the United Pipe supply quote, which included training. And my understanding is that your new vendor would step into that bid.
Correct. So then the price is 36.
Well.
Should we wait until we find out?
Why don't we approve with a range? You allow.
Just not to exceed. Right. And I'll, I'll get a report back to you as to what this confusion is about.
Would that be acceptable to?
Sure.
Any other questions about the equipment or?
Hey, thanks for fixing that one big leak up on Schooner Creek. Oh, that was a big thing to get taken care of. Good thing, good thing to get taken care of. Thank you.
Why don't we then make, entertain a motion to approve a purchase of the equipment, let's see, approve purchase of the AC digital, what is it called? From Fluid Conservation Systems in the amount not to exceed 44.6. Go move. Second it. We have a motion with a second, any discussion or any, you all right? This needs to be a voice vote.
And that would include the detection class, leak detection class?
If it needs to, to be up to the 44.6. The bid is, would be a range of 36.9 to 44.6. And it feels like the 44. And it feels like the 44.6 includes the classes.
Yes.
Quant?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Eggleton?
Yes.
Ellingson?
Yes.
And Norikus?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, David, for bringing that. Good hunting.
Yeah.
Department Committee reports. Now, it looks like we have an item called Parks Board Dog Parks. Heard this topic earlier this evening. Please come.
I wrote you a memo that forwarded a recommendation from the Parks Board. They had Cheryl Johnson come to talk to the board earlier, well, I guess it was in late March. And they agreed that this was an idea worth investigating and moved unanimously to ask the council to look into the money and the possible locations for establishing a dog park for the public good. I, with the help of Kate Dashell, who has been a big dog park advocate for a long time, put together some preliminary information for you based on that collected by Kurt Olson and Richard Townsend and various people on the staff and in the community. So we have not gotten into it very deeply at this point, but I know that some of you are very interested, and clearly, a lot of the community members are too. So if you have any specific questions, I will try to answer them, or maybe Cheryl can.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Do you have any specific locations in mind?
Well, we looked at a couple of places last week that were on city property. Well, one was on city property, one was at the old Taft Elementary School. And I'm not sure that either one would work. One was close to Curtis Park. It looked from our aerial photo like there might be a spot adjoining the Ball Diamonds, but it turned out that that's actually being used for parking lot. So I don't know that we can wrestle that away. And then it gets pretty steep out there. Oh, thank you. So the Taft Elementary School has an area that's chain-linked that is, has playground in it right now. I don't know whether it's been used or whether it's available to the public, but it looked like a nice starter park. Have not talked to the school district about it. And I understand that there are, there's some interest in a couple of private properties, but they are not, the owners are not at the point where we would want to discuss where those locations might be, because we don't know if they're interested. So it's very preliminary at this point.
With a little bit of experience with dog parks in Seattle, they are very successful. And I really would like to see that take place.
Other questions from councilors?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And I know you've probably thought of this, but I heard a little bit about this a while ago, with the possibility of maybe a private owner having ground where a dog park could be located, you know, so we could go into a partnership with someone that already owns the ground.
Well, that would be great, because the cost that we included in the memo did not include land cost, of course, and that would be a big item.
So could we, could we like put a notification out of some sort to see if anybody's out there that might be interested in that?
Would like to have a dog park on their property?
Hosting a dog park on some land that they own somewhere in the city or something, if it's appropriately located?
Well, we can certainly investigate that if the council would like us to do that.
I don't know how realistic it is, but I was just, that's kind of how I heard this story initially, or this thought process. So I didn't know if that had been tried and found not to, not to be a possibility.
Deborah, I guess, I was impressed with the number of 696 signatures on a petition, though I'm enough of a skeptic to understand that it's pretty easy to put your name on a petition. So, you know, I guess my questions, and I was very comforting before I get to my question, hearing Cheryl Johnson talk, because my questions kind of went to expectations of city. What really is the expectations? We, as a council, have heard very similar, you know, remove the name "dog park" and put in any other, I think we heard one in urban renewal, a kids' park. And there's community centers or cultural centers or all sorts of wish lists. So I would be looking, one, though it's a great idea, of skin in the game. And I would encourage the existing group to organize. And I think Mr. Johnson talked about a Facebook page or, you know, now I'm out of my league, so I don't even know what that means, but a way to communicate. So I guess I would be encouraged of having 696 friends of a Lincoln City dog park talking to each other with a small group who's called Leadership and could tell me they've got a nonprofit organized and in place. They've got volunteers, you know, ready to take on fundraising for quarterly bark and garbage and water bills. And that all we need from the city is X, you know, perhaps, as Counselor Eggle, Ellingson has talked about, maybe a lease from a private entity who's willing to, you know, lease their property or, you know. But to me, I'd need a little more refining, because I, like Counselor Sprague, am a huge fan of dogs and dog parks and think it is a, would be a good amenity. But I'm not quite willing to put the public dollars on the table until I see skin in the game.
Okay.
If that makes any kind of sense.
Yes, it does.
And I think, to me, hearing the mayor say that is just leveraging the most we can for what we end up spending, you know, to get the most we can for it, which sounds like you're trying to do that already.
Well, and I think it's a good opportunity this evening to raise public awareness about dog parks and the desire and need for one here. We do have a couple groups that are contemplating getting, getting into the business of getting support and donations for dog parks. And I mentioned them in the memo. The Ford Institute is looking for a project, and I guess "Dog Park" has been mentioned by several people. So that's possibly one vehicle. And the Beach Bark Group is considering expanding their mission to include raising some funds for Dog Park. So that would be a great start for us.
It would. And that would meet, you know, huge hurdles for me, along with, you know, the talking, being able to talk tele, with telecommunication or whatever it is with these 696 members to the dog park would be terrific. And it, you know, I think certainly indicate and show the support on a local basis.
Okay, then, with council's permission, staff will just continue to support the public efforts.
Yeah, let me make sure. Are there any objections? So far, it's not costing you anything, so...
I've just got one comment. I'm going to play devil's advocate here. When you decide, if you decide on a location, things like this, make sure everybody in the surrounding area approves of it. Because when you take something like this, put it into a neighborhood, you will probably not have everyone that's fully behind you. So please make sure that we select a location that doesn't adequately disturb other neighbors, because you're going to have increased flow of traffic, probably more noise and things like this in a neighborhood and things like this. And I can guarantee you'll find somebody in some neighborhood that's not going to like it. I just want to play devil's advocate in the beginning. No problems besides that.
I think we have stuff near the councilor's house that, you know, to eliminate.
I know, and I simply love where you live too, okay?
Well, we will be checking our zoning and make sure that we're not in any trouble there. And I understand Kate talked to somebody in the Parks Department in Newport, and they have had great success and very little, I guess, you know, problems with neighbors. It's been working very well for them, so.
Well, I, again...
Try to emulate that.
Yeah, hearing the comments from Cheryl Johnson earlier, I think she hit the nail on the head with you as far as identifying needs and the benefits and all this stuff. You has done an excellent job of refining it, and I see no disagreement from council. The next steps need to now progress. And I, for me, anyway, it's sincere of, you know, knowing early the expectations of city. And I think there is a role for the city, but it may not be, you know, entire fitting of the bill, putting of the bill. Counselor?
Mr. Mayor, one of the things that we did with the, oh, God, no, I got a mind blank here, with the open space, was that we found people who had property who wanted to dispose of it. And it was really to their benefit to dispose of it by reducing the cost of that by a substantial amount. And then writing off the difference as a donation saved a lot on taxes and that sort of thing. And that kind of a program could go very well along with what Gary Ellingson was talking about.
Right, agreed.
Any other about dog parks? And I love that marrying up, quite frankly, with existing, you know, the Beach Bark Organization and their mission. I see a good fit, you know, with them and the potential dog parks.
I noticed Kip is here tonight, so I don't...
You know, I noticed he was back there, yeah. We really, we don't really want to bring him forward, though, so...
No.
Any other, other questions? Are you comfortable with getting back to the folks? And I know they're in the room, so, and they can hear very well. I'm hoping they're hearing support, but need to do and continue the legwork.
Yes.
Sound good?
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you very much for bringing it forward. We now have an update on the community center. Thank you again for all who's in the room that came to support the idea of the dog parks.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Gail Kimberling with the Lincoln City Community Center, just here to give you a little update on what we've been up to at the community center.
Are you doing a PowerPoint?
While we're waiting, I should say, my dog Gracie says "wolf" in support of the dog park.
Are you one of these 900, or 696 signatures?
Not yet, but I will be. We have a petition at the community center.
What we do find annually, when they shut down the pool and open it up for a day for dogs, just before it's emptied and cleaned, scrubbed down and so on, it's, you mentioned what happens there?
We have a dog swim. The day before we empty the pool for its annual scrubbing and cleaning, we lower the water about halfway, and we invite customers to bring their dogs. They donate a couple cans of food for the local food pantry, and we get anywhere from 50 to 100 dogs. And amazingly, they're well behaved. I think when they're off-leash and it's not their own turf, they know they have to get along well together. It's a hoot, if you ever want to be entertained. It's always on Labor Day, so. So this is the Lincoln City Community Center update for spring 2012. We started off the month of March, we had the Fourth Annual Lincoln City Half Marathon and 10K. And I'm happy to report this event just keeps growing and getting bigger every year. This year, our race participants came mainly from Oregon and outside of Lincoln County. 72% came from around the state. We had 18% from Lincoln County, quite a number from Washington State, and then a few from Idaho, California, Nevada, and one from back east this year. Of those participants, and there were over 400 and some registered, 275 were involved in the half marathon and 154 were in the 10K. So a lot of overachievers in this bunch. We had runners and walkers of all shapes, sizes and speeds. We had our first-hand cyclist entered this year. He started a few minutes before everybody else, and he said his goal was to beat the first runner finisher, and he did, by about a minute. And then we had a local young man, Jason Zacker, who started at the back of the pack. And he took pledges for every person he passed on the race, and he, on the way, raised $3,000 for Angels Anonymous. So I think he passed everyone but six runners. It was a pretty remarkable feat. Then, of course, we had a little snow in March, and you see a little flower on the side. I was in Hawaii. I missed all the fun. But my staff did a great job, communicated with City Hall, kept the doors open, the generators were running. We had a little bit of power fluctuations, which affected our spa pump motor. So it was down for about two weeks, but it's all been repaired. Everything was good to go by the time it was spring break. Spring break, of course, was the last week, March 24th through April 1st. And our pools, our pools were filled to capacity. There were a couple times during the week where we had to tell people, "We can't let anymore in until some people come, oops, come out." Sorry, pointer. And all the customers were real understanding. They would go play in the gym, wait their turn. And if you've ever been in a pool, it's always kind of a continuous turnover anyway, so everyone got their turn to swim. We were fully staffed with lifeguards. We had at times five or six lifeguards on deck, no close calls. Everything went really smoothly. Sometimes, we had to bring another staff to help. In the lower left-hand corner, you'll see Carl McShane, who's our recreation supervisor, and of course, trained in first aid and CPR. He ran the water slide for us at one point. The community center was enjoyed by 1,400 youths during spring break. It was just a great week for us. If they weren't in the pool, they were climbing the rock wall, they were in the gym. 200 climbers climbed the wall during that week. This was our revenue. You can see in 2012, this year, we reached a high point. Of course, the weather didn't hurt at all. I did my rain dance. My staff told me that the next time, I should leave out the twirls, so it's not quite so windy during spring break. This little bump you see on Thursday of this spring break was when we experienced a power outage in half of the town. And I know the movie theaters were out in Taft, so we had a lot of customers come who couldn't go to the movies that day. So overall, we were very pleased with the customers that we have, with the way everything operated. Staff was terrific, patient. It just worked out very well. We were proud to open our doors to all our visitors and residents. Also in March, we have our Annual March Madness Program. And this is a little event where we invite people who use the community centers, they don't have to be members, to chart how much they exercise on a wall chart. We had 30 participants this year who put in a total of 501 hours of exercise just during the month of March. We have a male and a female winner. Carleen Robinson put in 40 hours, and Frank King, who's 89 years young, put in 33 hours, and most of his are in the pool. We decided we all want to be like Frank when we're that age. He's pretty amazing. He's pretty amazing. So it's just a little friendly competition to kind of encourage you to keep going to exercise when the weather's not quite so good yet, when your January, New Year's resolutions are way past. So we try to do this every March, and it's real successful. And this is something you might be interested in because we did, our rates did go up as of March first, following passage by the council. These two compare new and renewals for memberships from 2011 to 2012. You can tell we're overall up in 2012. We were up both in January and February over last year. We did take a little dip in March. I don't know if that's because a lot of people renewed their memberships in February before the rate increase, so we'll certainly track the trend for the next few months and the rest of this year to see, you know, how it continues. But the good news is we're still up considerably over last year. Coming next, we have the Lincoln City Swim Club's Spring Invitational, April twenty-seventh through the twenty-ninth, and we expect three hundred swimmers to be in our pool. And of course, they bring along their coaches, parents, siblings, and cheerleaders, so you can expect the town to be probably near capacity that weekend. It's always a very busy weekend. They take over the swimming pool and our meeting rooms. However, the fitness areas and the gymnasium and the rock wall remain open to the public at that time. We're also introducing adult co-ed volleyball, or dodgeball, and I have some information forums in case any council members are interested in this new league. We have teams forming now. We anticipate six to eight teams of eight to ten players. They'll be playing games at 6:00 PM on Friday nights, beginning April twentieth, in the community center gym. This started out as a petition on the counter at the community center, and within just a couple of weeks, we probably had four single-spaced pages of names signed up that they were interested in this. And quite a few people have come forward. We had a meeting last week with about a dozen interested team captains, and I think it just promises to be a lot of fun. The balls are softer than the ones you used in grade school, so the risk of injury is low. There are rules you have to follow, so we just hope it's going to be a good time for everyone. And if you're interested, Carl McShane, our new recreation supervisor, is the one who's putting this league together. And our biggest news is we now have online registration available to the public. It just went live on Sunday, and you can find this by going to activenet.active.com/lccc. And we will be doing, of course, lots of press releases, radio announcements, getting the word out to the public about this, this new program. And we're just so excited because you can not only sign up for swim lessons, you can sign up for the rec kids after-school program, for the summer program, you can renew your membership, purchase new memberships online, and you can reserve any of our facilities, including the park facilities, by going online to this website. Our administrative coordinator, Kate McClellan, has just done the lion's share of the work in getting this ready to go live to the public. So I want to extend my kudos to her and to the entire community center staff who've done a great job of getting all of our information uploaded. We have done tests and retest and more tests to make sure that it should all work really well for the public.
And we should get a link on our, our website, right?
We will also put a link on the Lincoln City, Lincoln City website as well, yes. So if you get a chance, check it out. It's pretty entertaining. We have lots of photos, lots of information for everyone on there. And that's my presentation. Any questions?
Counsel, any, any questions for Gail? Mister?
Gail, how many dogs do we have participating in that swim event?
In 2011, I believe we had close to eighty dogs.
And regarding lockers, we had a complaint a number of months ago regarding lockers?
We are still trying to resolve that. We've gone out and searched several different vendors, trying to find a source for keys, which has been the main problem. They come from Germany. We haven't been able to receive any even through different vendors. We did find some old keys that we were able to retrofit and make work in some of the lockers, and we may also take some keys from the lockers that are on the deck and use those inside the locker rooms instead. So that'll help bring up the number that are available for daily rent, but we're still in the midst of searching for a permanent solution.
And I believe there was also a question regarding passes, and somehow the pass is not being compatible with software?
That's all been resolved with this new ActiveNet program, knock on wood. We are ninety-nine point nine percent up and running with that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And I guess, David, that weren't there, were there drain issues or water issues or?
Those have all been, those have all been resolved.
Knowing that we can't please everybody all the time?
We try. And, and of course, there's still fluctuations with technology running our heating program for both the atmosphere and the pool. There are some glitches, but we, I think, are doing a pretty good job of maintaining constant temperatures.
Gail, not, not to belabor, but not to let it go, my understanding on the locks and the lockers, it's for the general public when they come in without a, you know, they haven't purchased a locker for long-term or something?
Right. It's for the day use.
So daily use, so they need some kind of place to leave their belongings?
Right.
Absent locks, and it's been quite a while that we've heard about this, and not to have found the solution yet, what is our solution currently? How are we handling people that need someplace, a secure place for their valuables?
We have not found that we run out of lockers. Even during the busiest times during spring break, a family member would hold the valuables. We didn't hear once that there's no lockers available. It might not be the size, since there's two sizes, a small and a large one that you would prefer, but we haven't heard that no one has been able to actually find one.
So the, the noise then may be from our local residents who are maybe used to a favorite locker or something?
Exactly, yes.
Okay.
Exactly.
Because I, I would think we'd, we'd certainly want to and need to do whatever we can, make sure there's a secure place.
Oh, you bet, right. And we remind people, when they come to the front counter, we try to remind them, you know, be sure to lock your valuables. Unfortunately, we have had some thefts, and I think it's just, you know, the way the world is right now, so we try to remind people to lock everything up.
Any other, other questions from council?
No one wants a dodgeball flyer? Nope. All right. Thank you, council.
Thank you. All right, we have another update on the pedestrian bicycle plan. Deborah, welcome back.
Are you doing a PowerPoint also?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Okay.
I might point out to the audience and to the, both in the chambers and on cable, that our two counselors, the far end, aren't just watching TV. They, because we've got them buried, they're not able to see the screen quite as well, and so they now have a monitor. We've limited the channels that they can watch. It is just the screen that they could see.
I prescribed to Netflix, just getting Alex talked into bringing it on.
Thank you, Deborah.
Okay, I'd like to tell you specifically about the project advisory committee meeting we had last Wednesday. This is the third meeting of this group, and the advisory group helps us with direction in proceeding with this project. The first two meetings were about setting goals and objectives and identifying existing needs and deficiencies. For this meeting, we talked about possible solutions that would work in Lincoln City. So I'm just going to run through rather quickly. I did give you a link to the memo number three, so you have that to refer to or go back to later on. The treatments that were proposed all had in mind these guiding principles. I don't think there's anything very controversial there, safety, accessibility, connection. And we also were cautioned that when we implement, we have to look at specifics about the location and be flexible and use professional judgment in applying these treatments. The consultants pointed out to us, or reminded us, that we are trying to serve the whole population from zero to the elderly, and that we all have different needs at different points in our lives. Even if we physically are able, have no disabilities, we may be caring for children or elderly who do, or we have a stroller to push, or a dog to, to take with us, or three children who want to hang under our hands. So when we keep in mind, or when we think about sidewalks and bikeways, we have to, we have to be mindful of that. They gave us very specific details on the needs for bicyclists, and also the different types of bicycles and accessories that, that we need to plan for, and the different types of bicyclists. Thirty-three, almost a third, third of our population is not interested in bicycling, but sixty percent are. They have concerns and are a little bit timid about mixing it up with, with the cars. We have a few percentage who are more confident and one percent who, who are strong and fearless. So, but we want to reach the, the larger number, of course. So I'll just buzz through some of the proposed treatments, and if you want to talk more about them, let me know. The obvious one is sidewalks. And of course, the, one of the questions that came up at the meeting is, do they all have to be paved? Can they be something else that's less expensive? Crushed fines is, is a treatment then, that it's, it's like a fine gravel that I understand does comply with ADA standards, so we may be looking at something like that instead of concrete in every situation. But the ideal, of course, is to have, have the pedestrian zone, and in some of our neighborhoods, where it's residential neighborhoods, maybe that's all we have. But in the more downtown or rural areas, we may need to have a furnishing zone where we can put our light poles and if we have planters, our planters, benches, that kind of thing, so that we can keep a clear path for pedestrians. And in addition to that, in front of the stores, we might want to have a, a frontage zone so that the store owners have a place for some of their items. Bike lanes, the ideal is to have a separate space for each type of travel. In some cases, we don't have room for that, so we have to figure out other ways to accommodate everyone. Holmes Road is an example that they used and showed bike lanes along both sides of the street there, which raised the question, would we ever consider a solution that included bike lanes but not sidewalks? And the group seemed to think that, and I agree, that Holmes Road has a lot of pedestrians. I see a few bicycles there. I travel there almost every day on my way home from work, but I, and I always see pedestrians. And so we asked them to consider having bicycle, sidewalks. And what we're seeing here is shared lane markings. So in this case, the extra right-of-way is dedicated to sidewalks, and it may be we'd want to have a wider sidewalk on one side like the Head to Bay Trail, or we might want to divide it up into six, five or six-foot sidewalks on each side. The shared lane marking is this bicycle that is printed on the travel lane, so it gives the drivers a heads-up that they can expect to share the lane with bikes, and it also points the bikes where they should properly travel in the lane. Another possible use of shared lane markings might be Coast Avenue. That's one of our narrow streets, fairly busy. And I had to scribble on this. You can tell what I did and what the consultants did, I think, without too much differentiation here, but everybody said, again, you know, where's the sidewalk? We have our Mike Tressider from Alta is a real bike advocate, so we have to keep reminding him that, that our priority is pedestrians as well. So, so given that we would have either fines or we would have sidewalk or something along here, and the shared use markings are demonstrated on the street. We have the concept of shared use pathway, shared use pathways, and that is typified by the Head to Bay Trail. But in, in, of course, the case of the Head to Bay Trail, we have aligned it adjacent to street, and they advise that we be careful in how we do that because we don't want at intersections for traffic to have to consider both what's going on in the street and what's going on in the adjoining, or the nearby path. So we had a cautionary note on that one. But there is a good application that's shown later in the slideshow. They had debate trail, they're talking, well, obviously, we want to fill in the gaps, so that's kind of a no-brainer, and we're, we'll continue to look for money to do that. The other gap that's notable here is in the wetlands. This is on West Devils Lake Road, just south of the hospital. That will require a boardwalk so that we do not interfere with the function of the Lots of traffic calming ideas out there, and we talked a little bit about each one. We talked about traffic lumps as opposed to traffic humps. Right now, we have a traffic hump on Jetty. It's a solid, raised area that crosses the travel lanes. The lump instead of the hump has lowered areas so that emergency vehicles can go through without going over the hump, and so can bicycles. Neck downs that would, that would narrow the street in some areas so that it would slow traffic. Curb extensions, we have those in Ocean Lake, but I'll show a slide later on that shows that we could improve on that because they don't really extend out far enough that pedestrians can see around parked cars, and cars cannot see the pedestrians waiting there to cross. Other ideas are raised crosswalks, so it kind of combines the designated crosswalk with a, a hump. Chicanes are places in the street that, again, narrow the width of the street, so it causes cars to slow down. And medians that shift the direction, mini-traffic circles. We have one that comes to mind immediately in IGA South, near there. It's off the street, so it's, but it functions the same way. Here's, here's an image that sort of represents this, and again, I had to draw in the sidewalks because, of course, several people at the meeting said, where are the sidewalk? Where are the pedestrians supposed to go? So this one is showing the, the turnaround, turnabouts, and those would be at intersections. The hump here is shown. Some of our members have been pedestrian advocates for quite a long time, and because, I think, in part, their neighborhoods include streets where people come off the highway and they see the ocean down the hill in front of them, and they, they kind of, you know, pick up a lot of speed just in a hurry to get there. And it is disruptive to the neighborhood, and it feels uncomfortable to pedestrians if it isn't actually dangerous. An idea that had some support at the meeting was one-way street couplets. Where we have really narrow streets, there's possibly an opportunity where two of them are three hundred feet apart, as our blocks are about that width, to have cars going east on one street and going west on the other street. By doing that, you reduce the need for two travelings to a, to one. By doing that, you reduce the need for two travelings to one motor vehicle lane and allows us to put in bikeways, sidewalks, and still maintain the parking. I've put P's on the cars that are parked so that you can tell the difference in this diagram here. And one example would be Southwest Fleet. This is just southwest of the city hall, and this narrow road winds down to 11th southwest that goes down to the Canyon Park. And you've probably all been through here in the summertime when it's full of kids and tourists and dogs and on leashes and cars. So we see an opportunity possibly there. Shared streets is an idea that has been popular in Europe, and they're trying at various places here in the United States. It recognizes that sometimes we just all have to share the existing space. And this is the existing situation where there's no distinct designation. In this case, different materials are used, and there's some areas of planting to show that this is not travel for motor vehicles, that this is for parking, and the pedestrians and cars then have to recognize each other's presence and move accordingly. In this case, they've also thrown in a little chicane, which would be a traffic calming feature to make sure that the cars don't exceed a safe speed for sharing. They've used an example of Northwest 25th. This is IGA, and the Congregational Church are here, and as you move, and it extends close to the ocean, to the west. I threw in this, this is a slide I added because I wanted to show you this sign. This is a "Share the Street" sign used in Germany, but I think it really conveys the message. You can achieve a similar effect by marking the pavement with the bicycle and a pedestrian. But I think this adds a lot in terms of people's recognition of what the street is intended to do. This is an example from the consultants from California, just was constructed, and you can see that people are parking. Unfortunately, there aren't any people actually using the street, so we don't get the full effect. But the intersection area shows a strong distinction that this is a different type of a street than maybe the arterial that they were, or the collector that they were traveling on before. And this demonstrates that use of this type of a shared-street approach would be for a short street. It wouldn't be for a major collector or thoroughfare. So a limited application, but given the existing streets we have that are so narrow and do pose some safety issues because of the hills and curves, this might be an approach that comes into play here. On 101, of course, we have a different situation because we're working with ODOT, but I have to say that our liaison with ODOT is very helpful in this regard, and we found that we have lots of good ideas coming from ODOT and supported by ODOT. Here, again, it's a sort of the same thing, but in this case, where we're looking at the street, it's actually the highway, so we have different types of traffic and a lot more traffic in our local streets. The gap was depicted here as going from no sidewalk and no bike lanes to sidewalk and bike lanes on both sides. And actually, that meeting that we had last week that Kurt was talking about, this is a cross-section from a sort of a typical cross-section, and you can see that they are doing exactly that. They are planning for sidewalks on both sides and bike lanes. So that's, we're really pleased to see that. In some cases, there's enough space for some separation of planting strip of some sort that gives us more separation and maybe opportunity for stormwater treatment. Where we don't have enough room for separated bikeways, we will talk, can discuss shoulder bikeways. And that might be in the Cutler City area to Schooner Creek Bridge. So in this case, we've got sidewalk on one side and a wider shoulder on the other side for the bikes. Here's the shared-use path. I'm having trouble with that. And this is where, you know, a concern might be about intersections and how cars churning will be paying attention to the oncoming cars, and hopefully, they can also keep an eye on the bicycles, and the bicycles will be keeping an eye on the cars. They mentioned that a good example of where this might be appropriate is north, as we go north of town, very few intersections as we're leaving Lincoln City. And so you could have this path that would accommodate both pedestrians and bicycles and two-way traffic. Road diet is a topic that we discussed and gained some support from committee members. The question posed to them was whether or not we should continue to look at road diet as a possible solution. We are also working on a master plan, and that is being paid for by ODOT, and that process is just starting up. We do have money in that budget to do some modeling to see exactly what the impact of a road diet would be, say, in Ocean Lake or in D River. And we are having our pedestrian bike advocates do a white paper that talks about the experience other communities have had with road diets, the benefits, and any disadvantages there might be, and how they would be similar or dissimilar to Lincoln City situations. So essentially, what we're talking about with the road diet is that we have a four-lane highway, we have parking on both sides. What would be the benefits of making a turn lane, and then what could we get by with two through lanes? And then be able to accommodate, because you have an extra 12 feet, bike lanes or expanded widened sidewalks, something of that, on that order, and still maintain your parking on both sides? So maybe the turn lane is enough of an advantage that it offsets that, you know, that one lane less. So there was interest in that, and we will be looking forward to the white paper and also ask our master plan consultants to do modeling to see where that goes. And here is the depiction of what that would look like in Ocean Lake. Now, there's nobody parked here, but there is, this does allow for the parking on both sides, bike lanes, the two through lanes, and the turn lane. All right, shared lane markings also work on the highway, and ODOT is willing to consider those in areas where we don't have room for everything we need. In some cases, we only have three lanes now, in some cases, we only have two lanes now. But where we don't have enough room for separated bike lanes, this is an option, and we are getting support from our PAC members for that, and also hearing that ODOT is happy to consider that for us. Enhanced crosswalks would be wonderful. We have concerns from even the most careful drivers that they are not going to see the pedestrian waiting to cross. And there are things called pedestrian hybrid beacons. They are overhead. I saw those in Salem. I didn't like those as much as the ones that were at pedestrian level because I found myself looking up at the light and then also needing to look down for the pedestrians, and I don't want to be looking at the wrong place at the wrong time. But these are another type of beacon, rectangular rapid flash beacons. They're just under the bike and ped crossing symbol, and they actually flash when they are activated by a pedestrian. So that would be a very attention-getting. And then there are structural things you can do in the middle of the street to enhance the crosswalk where you do have that third turn lane. If there isn't an intersection, if you're talking about a mid-block crossing, you can provide sort of a safe haven for somebody coming across the street. They only have to look at cars coming from one direction at one time. Shortening the distance for crossing and also getting the pedestrians out there where they can be seen before they step into the oncoming traffic is the reason for using curb extensions. I added a little bit here because I didn't think they had the perspective quite right, but the idea is that we need to bump these out a little bit further. ODOT's paying attention to that and going to see what they can do in this regard because this would be their project and would make a big difference, I think. Also, they have shown an enhanced crosswalk at 39th and show this rapid flashing beacon, the white lines, markings, which, of course, they always have to be maintained, and again, a safe haven for pedestrians as they cross. And the ramp. We had a lot of concern in some areas here and also at Logan that the sidewalks kind of stopped, and there wasn't a way to continue on, so we want to make sure we take care of those things. ODOT is willing to look at things that we might be able to do in terms of maintenance, such as markings, stripings, that won't cost a lot of money or time to implement. So we're hoping to get some of those things started in advance of the more expensive items. Again, I think I've already addressed the furnishing zone. When we have space on our sidewalks, it's nice to be able to separate these kinds of amenities for pedestrians and bikes and shoppers from the necessary width for pedestrians. And here is an example where they have photoshopped this area and added a little more sidewalk width, so that's another option that we can offer up if we are able to do a road diet or something that ends up offering us some more space to play with. So that is, in a nutshell, what we talked about last Wednesday. Our next meeting will be sometime in May with the Advisory Committee, and we will be talking about a system approach, and so what kind of treatments we're going to use on different types of streets. They're not going to be able to address every street in town, but we will do types of streets where these treatments are appropriate. And then the following meeting in June will be interesting. It will be a discussion of how we are going to implement this plan. That will include both things that we can do as far as our ordinances and our procedures within the city, and also financing that might be available and where we can look for that. So that is the update.
And the citizen that are participating in this study staying with you or continuing to be energized or participatory?
We had a couple, well, yeah. We were short a few members last time. There were a few people who had called us and said they had conflicts, were not able to come. We have to replace a couple members who have left and to do other things in other towns. But I think that the people that we did have there were engaged, and we sent them, some of them filled out an evaluation form of the treatments at the meeting, others took it home with them, and will be getting it back to us so that we have a sense. We were kind of rushed. We were trying to get through all this in an hour and a half. I think we had one suggestion after the meeting that we just go to two hours and then allow ourselves more time for discussion. So we are still encouraging that input even after the meeting. They did say, they did have a lot of good comments, I think, at the meeting, and they also have indicated that they are willing to serve, and as we had asked them to, for the master plan as well. And the timing is going to be rather good about that because they will be completing their work for this effort in June with that June meeting. And the Transportation Master Plan is starting up and expects to hold the first meeting of the advisory group in the early fall. So we're going to keep them engaged.
Good, all right.
We are looking, if I can mention, we do want a representative for the Hispanic community to make sure that we are not running into any language barrier problems and that we are reaching all the groups. And we did have someone who worked on the city staff, but he's taken another job elsewhere. And so if anybody in our listening audience is interested or knows somebody who would be good for that role, we would like to hear from them.
Thank you. Other questions? Yes, Counselor?
Deborah, on the enhanced crosswalks slide, I didn't see any option for lights in the pavement. Is that no longer an option?
I guess they're really hard to maintain, and that's why they kind of steered us away from that with the traffic constantly. You know, they tried to space them so that the tires go in between them, but I think it's kind of a problem. So it seems that these other treatments are more...
I think that technology may be developing to be more durable. I just, I have read some problem areas with them, but I don't think they're done. It's a great idea, so, I mean, I don't think it's over.
Portland has put some in, I think, fairly recently, so they must have faith in them.
Yeah, Tigard has too.
Okay. Do you particularly like them, Chester, or you just...
I think they're terribly effective. Like you, I wouldn't want to be looking up to see if there's lights flashing.
Right.
And taking my eyes off the road.
Right.
Or looking to the side to see if the light's flashing, to take my eyes off the road. So I think it's, if it's feasible, I think it's a great idea.
Counselor's break.
Yes, actually, that was one of my questions, and I'm glad you answered it. I would certainly hope that the technology will support that because the places that I've seen it, it really helps in knowing that there's a pedestrian that's either walking or going to be walking, especially when they're blocked by a parked vehicle there. It's hard to see them. I've got three other questions, too. On Northwest Jetty, that picture that you showed, right now, there are places on Northwest Jetty where it's almost impossible to maintain the normal speed and have two cars pass because it's so narrow. So if you're going to add sidewalks or bike trails down that street, are you going to have to acquire more right-of-way?
No, that's not something we're counting on. But in a lot of cases, I'm looking for Northwest Jetty. Still haven't found it.
I think that was the first picture you showed.
Oh.
There you are.
There we go. Typically, we have at least 40 feet of right-of-way, and our pavement widths range from, well, you know, the smallest is probably about 16 feet, typical might be 20. So we have room there, but sometimes it might be a little difficult to access because people have landscaped in that area. We may have power poles in part of that area. So, you know, it's going to be a case-by-case thing, seeing what is actually possible. But at least we have, we probably do have adequate right-of-way to... But at least we have, we probably do have adequate right-of-way to address the pedestrian issue. If we find that there are too many obstacles in the way, then, you know, we may look at some of these other options if the type of street is appropriate, say for instance, the shared markings or the shared street concept, where we just have to say, okay, this is what we've got to work with. And so, you know, everyone has to accommodate the other users.
Before you get to 24th, going northbound, there's a drain there that is a big dip, and when there's a car coming the other way, you better stop and not go over that drain or you're going to bottom out. I mean, it's quite severe. Then you go over the hill, dropping down to 25th, and right in that area, it is so narrow that you could almost lose a rearview mirror on the car coming the other way, it's very, very tight. And they just had to build a new house right there, which creates even more danger with people backing out because that's about the only way they can do it. So that's a real potential problem. Another question about, the same question about right-of-way is on Holmes Road with that configuration you showed, is there enough there?
I believe Holmes Road, again, is about forty feet in width, and what we're adding, what we're talking about adding, okay, let's look at the sidewalk one. With this, if we add, in this case, we're putting the bicycles in the street with the cars, it's a short, it's a short road, and it's relatively flat, so it seems like this might be a reasonable thing to do. With the sidewalk, we're talking about maybe ten feet total for sidewalk. If we tried to put some kind of a planting strip, maybe that would be four feet each, so you've got another fourteen feet, we probably do have adequate room to do that. But again, then, you know, the neighbors have to realize that that's going to, as it did with West Devils Lake Road, if they've planted their garden out there or if they're used to parking there, we might have to make some sacrifices in that regard.
Also, taking 101 and reducing two lanes, which in various times of the year are just absolutely backed up for blocks, many blocks, and then redoing, taking two of those lanes away, what happens to that blockage that I'm talking about?
Well, you know, as we drive through Lincoln City, we go from three lanes to two lanes, I mean-
Four lanes, yeah.
And so, we have these bottlenecks, and I, as someone, one of our committee members said, you know, if we did three lanes all the way through town, maybe that would be the best solution because then we wouldn't have this, these people trying to merge all the time. And if you consistently have a turn lane, that gets, takes all of that kind of traffic out of the way, you reduce the potential for rear-end accidents and holdups as people are waiting for somebody to take that left turn. The way it is now with the four lanes, you have options when you're traveling, say, south, and somebody in front of you wants to take a left turn, but that means you have to merge into the other lane, which means that, you know, that kind of backs things up there. So this is why I think the modeling that the Transportation Master Plan will do is going to be really informative to tell us exactly how that's going to change the traffic flow and whether or not we're going to see any traffic diverted to other streets. So, you know, that kind of remains to be seen, but those are good questions.
Is that being thought possible or included in that plan, is changing the Taft area then, into two lanes instead of four?
Oh, well, you know, I think everybody's pretty happy with Taft right now, so I'm not going to suggest we do anything there myself, but-
Well, no, I'm not suggesting that, I'm just wondering if that was included in the suggestion when you talked about having three lanes all the way through town.
I don't know if the individual was thinking about Taft or all those areas of town where it's going in and out, you know, north of Taft, so I think that would be the last place we would probably want to-
I think before, I would be on board with three lanes all the way through town where, except for Taft, that I'd want to see that other cities have gone from four lanes to two lanes, or three lanes, to, and to show that their traffic moves better.
Mm-hmm. Yes, and the white paper that we expect to get from our bike and pedestrian consultants will do those comparisons, and they've selected some recent studies, and they have also selected some specific examples, other cities that are similar to Lincoln City in terms of population or traffic or, you know, the type of community. And so, we do have some examples to take a look at, and that'll be informative, and then when we actually do the modeling, we'll have a pretty good sense of where the traffic, how the traffic will be affected.
And the last question is, this is all conceptual, we're not in a position to fund any or all of these, are we?
Well, ODOT always is offering grants, and I think by completing this plan, we are showing them that we are ready, that we have gotten, we have gotten behind a plan, we have a vision for how we are going to address the problems in the city, and that puts us in a good position to ask for funding. They have a Safe Routes School Program, and they also have other infrastructure programs, they handle a lot of the money from the, I've forgotten what it's called, the-
There are a lot of different buckets at ODOT.
Well, yeah, and a lot of the money that came through the stimulus funds came through ODOT as well, and so if we're, if, the more ready we are, and the more we have thought in advance about what we want to do, the easier it is for us to capture those funds.
And do most of those offers of stimulus money and others, are those to be matched by us?
Well, some of them are, it all depends on the grant program. This will also help us in terms of when we collect SDCs for system development charges, when we get new houses, new construction going on, it helps us figure out exactly what we want to have happen on those streets so we can say exactly what kind of funds we're going to need and apportion those accordingly, and it helps us with our maintenance in some cases where it's not a matter of actual construction of, or expansion of street, but just in terms of maybe how we'd stripe the street differently. And of course, what's happening on the highway, a lot of that will be ODOT in terms of striping and that kind of thing, you know, it's not a big cost item for them, it's just a matter of how they do their job. So we could do a lot, make a lot of improvements just by making it clear where we want the different types of traveler to be. So I think there's a lot of good that can come out of this, and we are mindful of the fact that we don't have a lot of money to spend here, and we're hoping to make a lot of progress without-
Do we have anybody from Public Works on your committee?
Absolutely, yeah, the project management team includes Stephanie Reed, who's our city engineer, and Richard Townsend, and the rest of the planning department. And we also have on our, we had a technical advisory committee that included both Stephanie and Lila, and Stephanie has involved the assistant engineer and the associate engineer to some extent in this planning, and so, yeah, we're all working together.
Very good, thank you.
Counselor Quin?
I've just got one comment, speed bumps. Being the recipient of a speed bump in front of my house, I don't advise it by any houses, okay? I have one in front of my house, North Lincoln Sanitaris goes by, Pepsi Company goes by, Cisco goes by, school buses go by, I get to feel them all.
You feel them?
Oh, yes, I do.
Oh.
Okay, this last time when they redid their overlay, I was a little too late, I wasn't a city councilor yet, they could have moved it fifty feet further down the street where there's no houses, we would have been all right, but it was too late. But I say, there's, you know, I do feel the buses and trucks and stuff when they go by my house.
Well, maybe we can interest you in a speed lump.
They flattened it out a little bit, but you still feel them, when they come down the street, they go over and the house shakes. It's a brand-new house, too. It's supposed to be earthquake-proof, but-
Other questions from Council? Alright. Thank you.
You're welcome.
For the update, and a lot of new words from that vocabulary of around traffic and bikes and-
And I'd encourage everyone to visit the website, it's lincolncitypedbike.org.
Alright, thank you. Alright, we have now city manager report.
Really down there? I have just a couple of very, very brief items. Again, it's budget time and that's where my concentration has been, but we did get a question at the, I guess it was the last meeting, from Counselor Ellingson about commercial inventory, it came up in public, so I thought I'd respond. It had to do with Buy Mart space, the old Buy Mart space, whether it was available or not. The answer is yes, it is available, so the square footage on the plan or on the inventory is correct.
Well, thank you.
And then, just, this is a short aside, maybe following up on what Bill Kimberling said, I just got this email from Nikki Price to Sandy Pfaff because Sandy was on vacation, and it has to do with spring break and the kind of things that people were taking advantage of, we saw immunity center. Here's what I'm reading on the Festival of Illusions that the VCB put on, thanks so much for blah, blah, blah. This came on March 30th, so it wasn't complete. Wednesday night they had 136, Thursday night 194, and turned away 40 because of the capacity of the room. Tonight's pre-sales, 170, and I assume they sold out that night and Saturday, this was before Saturday. And then also, the, they also had a, I'm sorry, I'm searching for the word, they had something for kids, camps, magic camps for kids, they all sold out. And so, that was, the more things like that there are during rainy spring break, I'm guessing a lot of those people still had a good time in spite of the weather.
So there is some real strategic value in advertising sunshine but actually having rain?
Absolutely, and that's what we got.
Okay, we'll work on that.
It doesn't work as well the other way, when they advertise rain and we get sun. And that's been a problem, and we've finally been able to get one of the, one of the major channels in Portland to be a little more accurate on coastal forecasts. We've also been working with NOAA about their forecasts, and because we had, for example, August, their forecasts were cloudy, cloudy, occasional rain, and it was clear day after day after day. So we've been working a little bit with them, trying to improve that. And that's all I have, Mayor.
That's it? Okay, thank you. Go to next agenda item, and that is public comment time, and this is an opportunity to receive additional comments, public comments regarding our proposed ordinance number 2012-05, and ordinance of the City of Lincoln City amending Municipal Code Chapter 10.20, and ordinance number 2005-12, in regulating the licensing and operation of taxi cab business operators and drivers. And in your packets, and on the agenda, you can see the, there's an ordinance further down, but this would be the time if there's any public, further public comments, we had one last meeting, but wanted to hold open, I don't see anybody. Anything to add that the ordinance looked, when I read it, looked to be the marked-up one that we had seen before?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I actually heard from a cab company in the interim between these two last meetings, and again, with some concern towards the amount of the insurance increase. You gonna watch me on it? Right, no, it's off, telling you, it's off.
I just wanted to watch him.
You can just look over here. The, there seems to be some, kind of a disconnect on how much, I'm actually really concerned about this now, the, all of the cabs, they're all flat-rate cabs, and I guess it's, was there four or five cab companies?
Yeah, something like that.
Something like that, yeah, something like half a dozen. I guess it's quite competitive, and so, you know, they have a hard time raising their prices, and so it's kind of all by increments, and even when they do, you know, we think of, at least for me, you know, we all, probably, most of us drive, you know, when I think of a cab, I think of, you know, maybe nightlife, kind of supported industry, and really in Lincoln City, we have a ton of, they have a ton of business that occurs during the day from retired folks that can't drive, when they're going to get groceries, they're going to get, you know, prescriptions and so on and so forth, and also people that, that kind of, I guess, cab pool or carb pool to get to often probably low-income paying jobs that they can't afford to drive full-time. So the cab companies are getting really squeezed right now with the, with the increase in gas prices, and then with this increase, it's going to, they're going to have to pass it on to the citizens. And I'm kind of feeling a little funny about it, and I'm wondering if there isn't some place in the middle that we can meet, or if they could, you know, if there was some sort of, you know, more gradual increase to the, to the insurance requirements that it would be, wouldn't be quite a harsh blow, I mean, it was, it seemed like this would trickle down to our, some of our citizens that are most in need.
The issue is, is when we decided to regulate cabs, we were advised by the city attorney that when you regulate something like this, a safety, public safety issue, you buy a risk. And what we're trying to do with insurance is minimize the city's exposure. We can reduce that requirement, the offset is it increases our exposure. So it's a balancing act, and you're free to do it.
Well, we've talked about, you know, when we're introducing, I mean, this is almost equivalent to a tax, I mean, we've talked about when introducing, you know, new financial burdens on people, you know, the ramping in of it, you know, is that, you know, could we have like something that would get progressive, I don't know, you know, I can't research it myself as far as what, what the cost increase is per increment, you know, but it seems like if we would, you know, do that for other folks, that we might do it for people that would be affected on a day-to-day basis like this, you know, five dollars for an increase in cab fare can-
I think we had some of that testimony at the last meeting as to how much the increase would be.
Right, it's by a third.
Yeah.
Which is significant when you have a lot of cabs. I mean, for us, you know, we go from 500 to a million, I think it's, you know, like for general liability, it's, you know, thirty bucks extra a month, but obviously if we're not.
Counselor, I guess, I hear the concern, and I think the reality is, cost gets passed down, or to the user, in this case, that would be the consumer utilizing cab services. I guess I'm balancing it, as I recall, the city attorney saying even the million-dollar request is less than statute, state statute, so we already have- request is less than, um, statute, uh, state statute. So we already have reduced, you know, granted, we, we moved, I think, from 500 up to a million, um, but we're below the state's hurdle.
I also think we're probably below this- we're probably below the state's, uh, you know, household income level.
Oh, well, most of it, no, I, no, I agree. I guess my, my question in the logic is, um, isn't it, yes, it will be passed down, um, that would be expected. Interestingly, we, we haven't heard from any consumers. We've heard from cab companies, and I, I appreciate their concern for their ridership. Though I bet if there were less cabs, um, I'm, I don't know if five, just to pick on the five cab companies in Lincoln City, you know, whether they can all make a living. Um, and, you know, if there were three, maybe more users go to fewer cabs. I, I don't know the word "capacity." Um, and so, you know, perhaps the margin wouldn't have to be as high, you know? I wouldn't have to jump it up. Because the million dollars is whether there's one rider or two riders.
Well, sure.
If I had five riders, I could split it over...
I think in, in most, you know, even if there wasn't a tight margin, an increase in your, your back end is gonna, is gonna increase your, your rider fees, you know? I, I, I have a business and, you know, if we have an increase in our, uh, in our overhead, you know, our, our customers see it, you know? I mean, that's it. Not many, not many, there's not, there's not a whole lot of benevolent private...
Right. So the question is, are you suggesting that the, you know, cab ridership should be subsidized, you know, by the public at large?
No. What I'm suggesting is, is that, you know, if, if we're, you know, proposing a, such a significant raise in, uh, in overhead for the cab companies that, uh, perhaps, uh, I was trying to find some sort of middle ground. You know, obviously, they prefer no raise. Um, the city would prefer five million dollar raise if they could, you know? Is, is there, if there's somewhere in the middle, you know, between 500,000 and a mill, that might provide some sort of economic relief, um, not just for the cab companies. Uh, obviously, the cab companies is the middlemen. This is a, you know, and again, I, I really don't have, um, much concern for folks that, that need a lift after being out at the bars at night. I'm more concerned with the folks that are, you know, going to get their groceries or, or having to get to work by a certain time uh, and are in that, that tough spot, that minimum wage spot, where it's you can't afford a car, you know, but you still have to get to work. And, you know, I mean, these are people that one thing kind of goes sideways in their, in their day-to-day, and it can really affect, uh, you know, their, their budget. Um, and again, you know, I think all of us here, we don't have to worry about that, being able to probably drive to council tonight. Um, but, you know, there's a significant portion of our, you know, citizenry that, that does.
And I get all I, the only point, I, I hear you. All I'm asking, so if you can, but if you reduce insurance amount...
I'm not saying reduce from what's required right now. I'm saying...
No, from the million. You know, it's, say, it's 500 now, rather than not go to the million, something in between. Are you not in fact having the city take on the gap risk?
I wouldn't say that the city's taking on any additional risk. The city actually decreases their liability from where it currently stands.
Yes. Good point.
It's about, it's about progress, right?
Do you mind if I turn to the insurance guy at my other end? And is there any enlightenment you can share with this, Councilor Sprague?
I think so. First of all, the way that this ordinance is written, uh, for a 500,000 per occurrence in a combined single limit, um, that doesn't work, because then you're saying you want a million in the aggregate. That's not the way insurance is written. Uh, secondly, uh, you're saying that it has to be written on an occurrence, not a claims-made basis. And I dare say that it's going to be almost impossible to find a, a, uh, insurance company who will write it on an occurrence basis, because, um, the, most of the companies that are willing, at least in my experience, to write a cab company are in the non-standard market. And the only claims, I mean, the only policies available, uh, in that market are claims-made policies. So I, I would not vote for this just for the, if, just because of that one right there. But getting back to the, uh, the liability limits, cab companies are held to the highest degree of care. So if you crash your car, um, there may be a question about whether or not you were really legally liable. But boy, when you're, and when you're carrying passengers, you are held to the very highest degree of care. And it's very hard to get out of if there's a slight bit of negligence you had. So what I'm getting at is that I am not willing to, uh, reduce the amount of insurance that we've got. In fact, I would say that we should have a million combined single limit. $500,000 anymore barely covers the defense costs in a serious accident. And, uh, it was 15 years ago, I think it was, when the first claim came through in Oregon for a million dollars, and we were shocked. Nowadays, a million dollars is a drop in the bucket when it comes to serious auto claims. And, uh, we had cab companies running around, uh, 20 years ago with no insurance at all. We, and we did not have any proof of insurance. I think we should have a certificate of insurance from the insurance company that's writing it for the companies that we are licensing. And that should be on file, so that we know that their, their policy is, um, is active. And there should be a clause in there that states that if the policy lapses, the, uh, that the insurance company notifies us that the policy has lapsed. And then we can pull the license of the cab company. I think the, the more regulation we can have on cabs, the better.
So how do you address, um, the concern Councilor Ward has raised, um, for the user of the cab? Um, because ultimately, it costs money...
And it's passed on.
And it's passed on?
Right.
So could you shed any light?
There's no way to, uh, to address that, uh, because the insurance is, is going to cost. And we need to have as high a limits as we can possibly have for cabs, because, uh, they're, I mean, they're, they're responsible for, uh, carrying people around for a, a fee. And, uh, the exposure is the greatest that you're going to get.
Gary?
Mr. Mayor, I, you know, um, I'm really grateful Alex, uh, has thought, thought about this and his sensitivity to it. There's a couple of things I'd like to mention. When, when we do things like this, I like to remember back of, to how it kind of all came to a head, so to speak. And there was an accident before the city was regulating cabs that involved a cab. And it was unfortunate, but fortunate that there were no riders, that the, the cab driver, um, was killed. And it was here in Lincoln City. And, um, then there were some other issues that came up, uh, after the accident, which I think to Mr. Hocker's credit, um, you know, of wanting to do the right thing for the, uh, cab-riding public. You know, the city that's involved in this regulation. And it's like no good deed, you know, kind of goes unpunished sometimes. But this is just a necessary part of that, uh, process. And, um, I, I would also like to remind people, and I'm not trying to be, um, I, I'm, I'm trying to be helpful. And that is, there's a bus running up and down this town all day long, practically every 35 or 40 minutes. If you combine the buses out of Newport that go through and go back to Newport and the loop buses, and there's also a dial-a-ride bus. And, um, I'm not trying to suggest someone not use a cab, uh, but that, that is, uh, an option. And the insurance has gone up for them, but it's not being passed along to the rider. And so you can still ride a bus, um, if you buy a packet of tickets for less than a dollar.
Councilor Sprague, um, what I heard you say, you, you have some concerns about the wording in the insurance category. Would, could I ask you to, if we could perhaps defer this, because I, I don't think there's any time urgency on it, is, and ask you to work with, um, legal counsel for the proper wording, using your insurance expertise and the, then, and your outreach to the actual insurance industry?
Sure. I'd be happy to do that. I think, now, when is she leaving?
Well, she'll be back towards the end of the month.
And so will I, so I guess that'll work out a while.
But if we could...
The, the section about, uh, notification, um, C says, and I don't know if this works or not, but C says the policy required in this section shall include a statement that the policy is not cancelable, nor the coverage reducible, except on 30 days prior written notice to the police department, which gives us time to go through a revocation process. I think the policies we've been getting have had that.
Some, the problem is, is not whether the company wants to cancel it. The problem is, has it, has it gone 30 days since the, the, they didn't make the premium and there was no coverage? And then you've got, they have 30 days to, to advise you. There's 30 days where they're driving uninsured. And then an accident occurs, now we're on the hook potentially. So when, when, as soon as a, uh, there's a non-payment or a cancellation taking place, we need to have immediate notice from the insurance company. And I don't know whether that's the way that this is set up or not.
I think it is. Um, anyway, um, you're welcome to...
There again, we can, we can do that, too.
Other, uh, other comments?
Yeah, I have one. I still question if that, if this should be done by the police department. Because when I, I went back on the net to try to see how other cities do it, and an awful lot of them, a clerk or a different department handling, they don't take somebody who has got, been through law enforcement training and take him off the street or something, to have him do something like this.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
You know, when you said that before, Gordy, I, I looked at that, too. And I think people in some of those cities are dealing with a lot more cabs than we have. You know, we have a relative few number...
Both ways, Gary. I didn't see the number making any big difference.
I mean, if you have, if you have a whole lot of people getting licenses, then you need kind of a department to deal with it. You know, like a department that deals with taxi cab licenses.
I don't disagree with your concern, and that's why we raised it at last meeting, but I, I didn't have a, a good alternative. Um, and as I heard from the chief, um, he seemed to, to make enough, uh, argument that enough things happen at the police department. Um, I, I would agree that previously, it certainly didn't belong with the city recorder. Um, but I, you know, absent something else, um, I, I don't disagree. And I, I like, quite frankly, that kind of a look at these, is what's the process and does it make sense? Um, but I, I haven't been able to find the alternative.
Where to put it?
Yeah. So it's, but I think it's a good thing, kind of a hold, and be, that we're thinking about the, on the right way.
Seems like it's, a policeman is over-classified for that job.
Yeah. Um, so why don't we then, again, any, uh, nobody from the public wishes to make any comments? Then if we can, uh, oh? Why don't you, yeah, come on up, Gene, if you... Because this is the time for comments.
This mic or that?
Both.
Oh, okay.
They're wide open.
Gene Scruton, A1 Beach Rentals and Whistling Winds Motel, just a thought I was thinking of. I'd be curious to see how many taxi accidents that have had over $500,000 claims in Lincoln City in the last 50 years. I'm sure zero or close to it. So like I said, the liability there is kind of limited. It's really almost a public service. Because like I say, when customers come out to our places or the motel, the bachelorette party, bachelor party, we say, hey, you can get a taxi for five, it used to be $5, to $7, and they just can't believe it. So it gets a lot of people out of the cars. I don't know if you read, uh, NewsGuard, how many DUIs are in this town, but all it would do, I think, would add to the DUIs. Because you got this huge amount of people that come down on the weekends, and they're going to the casino, they're going out drinking. I think there's 13 bars in this town. And especially the younger kids, they're more, uh, open to taking taxi cabs. I know as older people aren't quite as open to it, but, uh, they're really open to taking taxis. I have three kids, four kids, actually, and they come down, they come down with their friends and stuff, and they always taxi it, because it's just so cheap. So, like I said, I think you got to look at the risks, you know, of, um, the taxi. Now, insurance agents always think one way, not if I have a relative as a tax, or as insurance person. But I would think, you know, those bike paths down Jettie Street, if one of the kids were pulling one of their babies in one of those little carts behind her and, and the, the path wasn't planned out right, and someone hit him and killed him, I would think there'd be a lot of liability there, too. But I think it's just, uh, being this is a tourist town, it keeps a lot of tourists that are drinking in the evenings off the road. And I know those guys don't make a lot of money, because my son-in-law always talks about this one cab, they took them, when they opened the door, it fell off. So, I mean, you know, I don't think they're making gobs of money. So I think that's something to consider. It's more of a public service and safety to people. Thank you.
Good point. Thank you. Thanks. Okay. Um, why don't we move on then? And Roger, if, if you wouldn't mind, uh, we're going to, um, not participate in this ordinance that's later on down a vote on it, but rather buy some time and have you work, uh, with the city attorney, um, and perfect the wording on the insurance piece?
Good.
Is that, and then we'll come back?
I think it might be useful, let me throw a challenge out to the cab companies, to give us um, some financial records that would demonstrate what percentage of the insurance is in the fare. In order to know that, we'd have to have some idea of, of income, a number of fares, whatever. Um, I, I don't think it's fair to just say, I mean, to say that insurance costs will go up a third, well, okay. What percentage is insurance of, of the overall cost?
Excellent point.
And I'd like to see some records on that to, to establish that. Are we, are we talking about a 20-cent fare increase? Are we talking about a 50-cent fare increase? I, I mean, I really don't know.
Good point. Thank you. All right. Moving on, then, we have another item for discussion and comment. Is an opportunity to receive public comment regarding proposed fee increases for parks as described in resolution number 2012-06. And I'll bet, uh, there was an attachment with the resolution where you saw the, um, price increases. And perhaps we could have Gail come back and want to talk about these prices?
These proposed prices were originally part of the community center proposed fees that we brought before you earlier this year, but we took them out until the Parks Board had a chance to look at the fees and approve them, which took a couple of months, because they were vacant few spots. But in their meeting last month, they unanimously approved these changes. Um, one thing that we tried to do with the proposal, um, in addition to going up about, um, anywhere from 12 to 15 percent, is to, um, take some basic day-use fees, break them down into hourly fees, so that a person doesn't have to rent a park for an entire day. They can, um, for example, Curtis Park or the skate park rent by the hour at a time. We also divided the fees into, um, three categories, commercial, private, and nonprofit, um, to give some folks a break who are nonprofits, and then, um, the commercial users charge them what's appropriate.
What's the difference between private and commercial? How would you think?
A private would be just an individual. I want to have a birthday party.
Family reunion or something?
Right, right.
Okay. Okay. Um, I, I noticed the three categories, or in essence, we're really talking about the baseball parks, the skate park, and then, you know, shelters and whatnot at parks or picnic areas or that kind of stuff. I'm always curious of, um, as far as revenue from, from this, these categories, was there a, do you have an idea of revenue stream from last year and year-to-date?
I don't have that number with me, but I know it's minimal. Um, the most rented park in this group is, uh, Regatta Park. And I believe it was rented about 30 times last year.
Do we not, we don't charge then to the youth leagues and stuff, or the use of the parks?
We don't charge the youth leagues. We do charge the adult softball league. And there is a rate for them. Um, of course, you know, the mushballers are coming to town. They pay, um, the standard fee for the ball field. The skateboard park is rented maybe a couple of times a year. The skateboard park is rented maybe a couple of times a year. One is for the Oregon Trifecta, which did not happen last year. They went to another skate park besides ours. It does take a special use permit to run this, to rent the skate park for a day.
So again, there's not an issue of capacity, so we've got plenty of space. Have we, you know, I always question about raising fees versus reducing. Would we conceivably get more use at a lower fee? Not that the fees are extreme, or large to begin with, but-
We did check with other park rental fees around, you know, the area, Newport and beyond, and some other parks and rec districts, and ours are very low compared to theirs.
Yeah. I was just trying to think of a way to generate even more usage and income rather than, because the dollars were actually very small, I thought, in increases, so.
Well, we hope to increase our marketing, and that's one place I think our online registration will help, because they'll have photos of the parks, it'll be right there. People clicking through our other activities might be able to say, hey, you know, we can have a family reunion there. We can rent this for a birthday party, so.
Yeah, that raises a point. Do we have a link or using the VCB website and stuff that there's a-
I do work with the VCB.
So they, that someone going through the VCB website would know that we have facilities available?
Yes. And if they get inquiries, they pass them on to me and vice versa as well.
Other questions? Yes, councilor?
Out of these individual fields, groups, where do the mushballers fit?
I believe they use two of the fields, oh, you mean for the rental?
What category?
Yeah, what category?
They are a private group.
Pardon?
They're a private group.
A private group? And are they, are they registered for this year?
They have not paid any fees yet, no.
And are they aware of the increase in-
Yes.
They are? Okay. Because that's a group that has come for years, and I hate to see them not come.
Mm-hmm. When they made initial contact with me and we penciled them in the book, I let them know that this proposal was going before council, so.
Okay.
Other observations, thoughts, feelings on this issue?
Yeah, the thing I remember when we discussed, you know, raising the community center rate was, everybody that testified, they were people that were using the community center, thought we should raise it even more. So I think we're doing a good job.
Yeah, I guess I wanted to make sure that this wasn't going to adversely affect the youth leagues and, you know, some of the kids, because I want to make sure that kids are having, finding exercise and having availability.
We have a cooperative use agreement with the youth league, so they're there.
Do we need to say that in here? Not that we have a cooperative, but don't we need to pencil, to add in an exception here or a zero fee?
We could.
Because otherwise, we're going to get an argument from somebody that says we're not charging something we should be charging, and I'm going to be up here red-faced.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, I would, I would think to, for the point of clarification, that would be an excellent idea.
Questions?
Gail, would it be fair to say that the, we're attempting to minimize the subsidy that the city pays in order to support the parks?
Through the rentals, yes.
Okay. Any other questions from council? All right. Thank you, Gail.
Thank you.
Let me see if there's any comments from the public, because this would definitely be the time that the public make their comments known regarding the proposed fee increases for parks. Hearing none. Okay.
I have one question of procedure, and that is, if we're going to amend this, do we just amend it by voice, or do we have to bring it back with the wording?
No, it's substantively the same. Only if you'd make wholesale changes would we need to bring it back.
So you can go ahead and add the-
I just include it in the motion of adoption that, to amend it to include no fee for-
Youth leagues?
Youth leagues.
Okay.
For, I would say for authorized youth leagues. Somebody's going to try to use that loophole in ways that you can't imagine.
With that then, we'll go to our next item, which is actually the resolution, Resolution Number 2012-06, a resolution of the City of Lincoln City repealing Resolution Number 2009-30 and adopting a new comprehensive parks and recreation administrative fee schedule. Take a motion to approve with modification?
I would move that.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve with modifying and adding wording to the fee schedule of referencing no fee for authorized youth leagues. Resolution Number 2012-06, a resolution of the City of Lincoln City repealing Resolutions Number 2009-30 and adopting a new comprehensive parks and recreation administrative fee schedule. Is that just a, all those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed with a nay? Hearing none? Thank you. Item K17, it was the ordinance for adoption on the taxi cab, and we're going to just pull that and bring it back later with a little more work and clarification.
If we're going to have the public hearing still open-
Actually, it's not a public hearing. I was informed, that was the same mistake I got too.
I'm sorry, and I know the difference. But, so, we don't need to notice it then, okay?
That was my understanding, yep. But we allow comment time and encourage comment time. So I think we're safe.
We are.
Or we'll hear about it.
No, we're safe.
Okay. Then this would be the time for additional comments from citizens present on non-agenda items, and we actually had another sign-up, Mr. Kip Ward.
My name's Kip Ward. I'm at 4417 Southwest Highway 101 in Lincoln City. And I'll just take just a minute, hearing the, I'm making a comment regarding the dog park. And I heard Beach Park's name mentioned, and so I just thought I would just add for a little bit of clarification. This is, last four or five years has been pretty tough on the animals. There's an old saying, poverty walks in the door, love goes out the window. And unfortunately, that's true in our most vulnerable, our kids and our pets. And we've really gone through it the last four or five years, and most of you on the council have actually opened up your pocketbooks and thrown money at it. In this game, for the Beach Park folks, we not only have some skin in the game, we've got arms and legs. And we're making headway. We made over $7,000 at the last auction event at the eventuary, and all of that money goes into the Beach Park program. One of the things I did want to make clear is that the Beach Park program is not a nonprofit. However, all the money that we do take in goes to the Humane Society, and it's put in a category that's reserved for the Beach Park program, which is the free care for pets from people, from folks that don't have means. Unfortunately, while the Beach Park is full on that end, on the Humane Society's end, on the spay and neuter program, they're running out of money. So it's like running in quicksand. You get one thing held up, and then the other thing falls down. So we are going to be having, there's a point to all this. We are, we are going to be having another auction in the near future, and we would certainly appreciate any donations as far as merchandise or anything that we can auction off to provide money that will go to the Humane Society. So our mission is a little bit different than the Beach Park or the Dog Park, even though they may rhyme, the meaning's a little bit different. And right now, we have 100% of a very small pie, and it's our hope, and I would love to get my hands on the 696 people if they gave their phone numbers or addresses, because we're getting pretty good at raising money, and it's another 696 doors I could knock on. But it's our hope that working with these 696 people, that we can in fact make a larger pie. And with a larger pie, maybe they can have a slice too, and working together, we can make a better pet-friendly community. And as far as location, I would hope that you folks find a spot on 101, maybe coming into Taft, because nothing says welcome to someone that has dogs than a big Dog Park sign. So anyway, that's, those are my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. What I heard you saying is that you'd be as cooperative as you could be with the 696 potential players in this-
That's right. And we're happy to work together, and we're actually learning, you know, you do it wrong enough times, and I'm still doing it wrong, but just less wrong, starting to learn the path to being able to generate income. And for, you know, it is a community problem, and where it's actually a community problem that's being held, that's being taken care of privately among concerned members. And, you know, being a small government person, I'd love to see that, so.
Great. And just to be clear, when you say the Beach Park is not a nonprofit, you just mean it's like a nonprofit entity?
Right. And actually, we're getting, we're working towards getting our nonprofit status. Doug Holbrook, who is an ex-city councillor here and a wonderful attorney in town, is working to do that. But even after we reach our nonprofit status, we're still going to put the money to the Humane Society. There's no need to duplicate their administrative efforts. It's just easier to write a check out to them and let them do the work. And they do great work.
That's great. Other questions, Mr. Ward? Okay?
Okay.
I don't know if this is the appropriate place, but I would like to ask a quick question. You know, the ballot, the vote that's coming up for-
Which I know nothing about, but go ahead, yeah?
Okay. No, I don't have a question.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from the public?
Hi, Don Williams, 2625 Southwest Dune. Speaking on behalf of the Bay Area Merchants Association tonight, or as we like to say, BAMA. At our last meeting, and at several meetings, we've had discussions about how to draw volunteers together with events that we've created. We have a bike rodeo coming up, which is third year, I believe, where we need people to help fit kids to bikes and bike helmets and things like that. So we thought, well, with all the social media out there, why don't we create a space? So we created a Facebook page, Central Oregon Volunteer Bank. No, that's not right. Central Oregon Coast Volunteer Bank. So you can go to that site, post your need or volunteer. We're pretty wide open, anyone can post what they like. It's also linked to a Twitter account. No exclusions. So hopefully that will help bring some people together for their needs. Also wanted to talk about the BAMA Flower Basket Program going on in Taft on Southwest 51st Street. We have sold approximately 22 of 32 available slots. We could definitely use a few more commitments from people who want to beautify the Taft area. The city maintains those, they have a beautiful irrigation system set up. A.J. Jarvis of Starfish Framing has created a weather-resistant plaque that can be mounted to the base of each, what's the word I'm looking for? Hanger? Planter post? To recognize the people who have donated, whether for their own selves or their organization or a loved one. So we'll take care of that, and we'll set that up and remove that at the end of the season. The bike rodeo, as I mentioned, is on May 19th. We are seeking volunteers to help with that program, and we're also accepting donations to purchase bicycles. I believe we gave away 10 last year?
Yep.
10, 10 bikes. And we'd like to double that this year. So we're looking at an average cost of about $60 to $80 per bike. So you can contact Mary Jarvis at Starfish Framing, she's our secretary for BAMA. And then one thing, I just wanted to tag on with what Gail had mentioned earlier about dodgeball. BAMA has their own team, the BAMA Slamas, and we'll be practicing Thursday night against an unknown opponent, who we take great pity on. But I just do want to encourage folks to come out. If you've never played dodgeball, if it's been a long time since you have played, come out and check out what we're doing. We'll have a full explanation of rules and show you what it takes. It's a real low-cost event. This is one of those things, you were talking about cost to participants, $250 for a team of 10. I paid, I think, $68 for a season when I was in Portland playing. So 25 bucks a pop is a pretty good deal for a Friday night out. And cost for equipment is dirt cheap. A pair of knee pads and shorts and you're in. So that's all I have.
Did you factor in the increase we just passed?
No. I've already written my check and it's in.
Okay.
Oh, I will just mention too, on the Dog Park discussion, BAMA is definitely looking to get involved in that. Kip is a member of BAMA, and we want to help wherever we can. I own Nell Scott Cafe, and we have a dog walk-up window, and we have a dog-friendly deck, and it is amazingly popular and being sought out by visitors, not just mine, but dog-friendly places. So this is another draw that'll help balance the scales between one place or another during a summer or spring visit. So, thank you.
Great. Very informative. Thank you, Don, for bringing that forward. Other comments? All right. Hearing none, and I'll down the bank, councilor?
Yeah, this Saturday at the eventuary, at 10:00 AM to noon, there's a call to action for a community shelter for homeless families. Lincoln County, I think, has one, 60 family backlog or 60-person backlog. And so there's the Lincoln County Health Organization, which typically tries to make sure that homeless students continue their education during their transitional times, is trying to figure out a way, some sort of system to provide a shelter in Lincoln City. So one in the county, I think, none in Lincoln City as far as shelters that'll accommodate a family. And as I'm sure, maybe some of you have heard, north Lincoln County, we have kind of a disproportionately high number of homeless youth, homeless students here. It's been an ongoing problem. And we're hoping that, with the help, Lincoln County Help Center is hoping that some interested parties will show up at the eventuary Saturday at 10:00 to work on a solution, something that the community can use to help facilitate.
That's good. That's a good call-out to the public. So Saturday, 10:00 to 2:00?
10:00 to noon.
10:00 to noon at the eventuary.
The eventuary, you bet.
Thank you. Counselor?
Oh, no, nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Nothing, thank you. Counselor sprayed?
Nothing.
Okay. Good. Well, let me, let me report out, the City Council of Lincoln City conducted a performance valuation for the year 2011 of its city manager, David Hawker. David Hawker has been the city manager of Lincoln City for over 12 years, with the average time for city managers being something nearer six years. Council recognized David Hawker's job knowledge and professionalism- Council recognized David Hawker's job knowledge and professional development with a rating of good in each of these categories. The citizens of Lincoln City benefit from his years of, years with the city, and his over 30 years in municipal city management. Planning, organizing, financial management, communications with governing body, communications with employees, creativity, honest, fair, and ethics, and hiring were given acceptable ratings. The City Council was critical of David Hawker's performance in the areas of supervision, delegation, communication with the public, risk management, and leadership by providing these categories with a rating of poor in each. Specific details were provided to David Hawker in support of the above noted ratings when council met with him recently to conduct this evaluation. There was no recommendation for any merit increase in salary. Council understands and recognizes the challenges confronting Mr. Hawker and pledges to work with him to overcome the issues recognized in his performance evaluation. Any comments? We stand adjourned.